At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request -- please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance by Bobby Forbes there. Please wave your hand, Bobby. They're right up there. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes. This time, I will call to order the City Council meeting of the City of Grand Terrace. This is our regular meeting for September 10th, 2019. Our invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Father Andrew Lesko of St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Council Member Bill Hesse. If you would, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. O heavenly Father, on this the eve of the 18th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks in New York City, Washington DC, and rural Pennsylvania, we pause to remember the over 3,000 victims of that attacked and the first responders who valiantly came to aid those affected. We ask you also remember those first responders who are now suffering 18 years later from the effects of working at Ground Zero. We also would like to take time to thank you, O heavenly King, for all the benefits that you have bestowed upon us, our country, and our city. We are thankful for all of our civil authorities who protect us from harm. We are especially thankful tonight for our mayor and City Council members who provide strong leadership and direction in an uncertain world. As we begin this meeting this evening, we pray that you grant us your peace, patience, wisdom, and understanding so that whatever we accomplish in the course of this meeting and for the rest of our lives will be beneficial to us, our city, and to your glory. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Thank you, and I'll mention it this time, tonight's meeting will be closed in memory of Council Member Sylvia Robles's relative, who I'm sure she will tell us a little bit about, Delia Lopez Rosales. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a special presentation tonight from Lupi Camacho. She's a partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, and residents of the City of Grand Terrace. Thank you for having me tonight. We are here today to give a little bit of information to the community regarding the upcoming decennial, the Census 2020, and we want to make sure that we get the information out to the community. There has been a previous discussion with the mayor and the city manager, which -- in which I provided a lot of this information, but we also provided some literature for the council members regarding the Census 2020, and important information to know in case that your constituencies call and ask questions because we are beginning to roll out some operations from the Census. So let me begin by giving a little bit of a brief introduction about the reasons why we do this. Obviously, the Census -- the purpose of the Census is to count everybody, and it's in our Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, of course, of our Constitution, and the fact that it is in our Constitution makes it extremely vital and relevant for our democracy, and we want to make sure that we maintain that and that we keep that going. It happens every 10 years, of course. You know, this is our decennial coming up in 2020. The main two reasons why we do this Census 2020 is, first of all, for power, obviously, with the division of power, the apportionment of power, the representation that we get and that we give to our elected officials and that we're able to receive for the state of California and, of course, all of the states in the United States, in the nation. We also utilize the information for state redistricting and legislative boundaries that are set down, so it's very, very important with regards to representation and apportionment of that representation. The other facet of it, of course, is the money. That one, I think, is what makes it more important for a lot of our communities, is the money that comes down from the federal government. There's more than $675 billion that are distributed annually, and this money comes to our community. Now, just to give you an idea of our undercount, as it has occurred in the last decennial in 2010, Inland Empire was undercounted by about 30 percent, so 30 percent of our individuals were not counted. That tallies out to approximately $2,000 per person that was not counted for 10 years. So that's about $20,000 per person for those 10 years, and that's a lot of money that didn't come to us. It didn't come to us in the form of the WIC program, that didn't come to us in after-school programs, community services, roads, bridges, rehabilitation of our infrastructure. All of that is counted in the 670 -- over $675 billion that gets distributed annually to all of the states and the communities. It trickles on down, and, of course, funding is based on density of population, so we want to make sure that we count everybody in our community so that we can get the slice of pie that we are entitled to. I also wanted to kind of focus a little bit on the importance of the data and what the data is for. The data is used for many, many things. Elected officials, of course, know that decision-making at all government levels utilizes the Census data, but it also is used in making business decisions, making future projections of where funding will go. So when new development occurs, we want to make sure that there's schools and infrastructure to support that new development that's coming in to our community, and everybody knows Inland Empire is known for its growing capability. We've got new homes popping up everywhere, and so we want to make sure that those new homes have both the infrastructure as well as the educational opportunities and community services that they should receive based on the increased population. The main purpose of us getting this word out early, and it is early, is to provide people with the ability to understand that this year's decennial is going to be different from any other decennial before us. All other decennials in the past were paper questionnaires. This decennial is going to be predominantly web and phone-based, and, of course, we all know that not a lot of people have a whole lot of trust in the web and in the internet, and so we want to make sure that we educate, inform, and empower our residents to be counted, to get counted. The paper questionnaires will be available, but they will be available at the end of April. That's when they are going to come out, and then there will be actual census takers that will follow after that to assist anybody who needs that help. But the web and the phone are going to be the predominant format by which we are going to count our residents this decennial. To kind of give you an overview, 95 percent of the households will receive an invitation by mail, and this invitation is going to give them a website and a phone number for them to respond to us. We will not be calling anyone. We will not be sending any emails. We are hearing about some scary things going on where people are utilizing the Census Bureau and the operations to try to defraud people, but I believe that our PDs, our police departments throughout the entire nation, have been informed of the operations that are going on, and they will be continued to be kept abreast of all of the operations that go on. So 95 percent will receive this invitation. Almost 5 percent will receive an invitation, but then there will be a census taker that will come out to them, and those are more in the rural areas where there isn't a whole lot of internet connection. The areas that have no internet connection, which tends to be less than 1 percent of our nation, those areas will have an actual census taker come out with a paper ballot and a paper questionnaire, and they will fill it out for them and make sure that they get counted and that that community or at least those groups of individuals get counted. As we go through this, of course, the letter of invitation, as I said again, is not going to be a paper ballot. It's going to be an invitation. That is all that is going to be received. Some areas will receive the invitation and the questionnaire, but those are going to be more likely than not in the rural areas where people don't have internet access or the internet access is intermittent. It's a hit-and-miss type of situation. These are really important, and I want to make sure that I focus on these because these are also included in your packet that I delivered to you today, this particular mailer. It has the actual schedule of how this is all going to roll out. You notice that first we start out with the invitation, the letter, and that invitation will ask you to self-respond. It'll have a phone number and it'll have a website so that the community can self-respond. If you haven't done it by about mid-March to late March, then you're going to get a reminder letter. If you still haven't done it by about the end of March to about the beginning of April, you're going to get a postcard. If you still haven't responded by about, let's say, April 8th through about the middle of April, then they're going to send you a reminder letter which will be followed by a paper questionnaire. And if for some reason you just still have not responded, at the end of April is when the final postcard will be sent out, and then there will be somebody that will follow up knocking at your door. So we want to make sure that we try to catch everybody, as many people as we can, in the top tiers so that they don't have anybody showing up at their doors. We have seen, and we have -- the US Census Bureau is cognizant of the fact that people are very apprehensive about answering the door and having to talk to somebody, so I personally don't like it, so I wouldn't do it. I probably wouldn't answer the door. So we understand that, and we're cognizant of that, and for that reason, there are a lot of reminder postcards and letters that will go out consecutively and continuously to make sure that people do self-respond. We will be having it available in 12 non-English languages, the internet self-respond and the Census questionnaire assistance, 13 languages for the Census questionnaire assistance. So there will be assistance online where they can go to the website and click a little button, and then a whole slew of different languages will show up, and then they can pick whichever one they like, and it transforms the entire website into that language so that they can follow through and read through and be able to answer the questionnaire. You will notice that there will be a total of 56 non-English languages where we are providing video and print. Those videos will be available on the internet as well, and print, we will disseminate to the cities. We will make sure that the cities receive that. The most important one that we are doing a dual language, so we're doing an English-Spanish, is the Spanish questionnaire. There will be an opportunity for a Spanish-English questionnaire, bilingual, for those households that do not have somebody who really understands the English language and the English language is not their primary language at home. So if the primary language at home is Spanish, then they will be receiving this particular one. This is a list of all of the different other languages that will be available on the internet with videos and, of course, print as well. You can see we're trying to pick up as many as we can, as varied as we can, because we want to make sure everybody does get counted. Oops, let me go back a little bit. I can just -- there we go. Oh, there we go. Okay. So this is the questionnaire that's in English and in Spanish, and you'll notice that where 20 percent or more of the community speaks Spanish at home, and there's no one at home 14 years or older that speaks English well, they're going to be receiving this. And the US Census Bureau knows this because, obviously, we are in the business of statistical information. We know, and we have algorithms that have been run in many, many decennials before, and we know where these areas reside. We know this information already, and we try to cater to them to make sure that they do respond. We want to make sure that we focus a whole lot on the Title 13 protection that we have for all of the answers that any respondent gives to the US Census Bureau. Your information is protected. It is confidential. It is required by law that it be protected. The penalties are very high for any disclosures or wrongful disclosures of information. As you'll notice, five years of imprisonment and/or a fine of $250,000 per occurrence, per person, that you divulge any information on. All of us that work for the US Census Bureau take a lifetime oath, and we are held to that lifetime oath so that we are also vetted and also scrutinized to make sure that we are not compromised in any way, shape, or form. So we want to make sure that we let everybody know that their information is only given out as statistical data, no granular information, no particular information about any particular The Census timeline, this one, I like this particular timeline because it gives you two operations that are going on right now. We've been opening up area census offices in the area, and I mentioned, I believe, to one of the council members regarding the new area census office that is due to open in October in San Bernardino. So that's going to be very close to us here for the City of Grand Terrace, but we also have the field canvassing that is going on, and we want to make sure that information gets disseminated so people are aware of it. I went a little too far back. Okay, so I -- we do a little bit of an overview of the Complete Count Committees and why they work and why we are working with communities to do the Complete Count Committees. Complete Count Committees, the background of them is that it's a structured format by which your community can tailor your outreach to your community members. Every community is different. Some communities have a larger population of elderly, others have a larger -- or retired individuals. Other populations have a lot of Latinos, a lot of African Americans. It just depends, and some of them are very brand-new. Like in Chino, for example, we've got a whole lot of new development on the south side, and all of those new homes have a lot of new families, which means there's a lot of babies in that area, and that's good. That's great, but these babies are going to need infrastructure. They're going to need schools so that they can attend in the next five years when they are able to go to kindergarten and first grade. So we make sure that the Complete Count Committees tailor the information to your community, and that is what we help you form and we help you structure. We make sure that we enroll community partners so that we increase our participation and the participation of your community. We educate, we encourage, and we engage through your Complete Count Committee. The next steps, again, we sort of do this basic plain vanilla presentation for everybody, but, of course, City of Grand Terrace is already much further ahead. There will be a resolution that will be put forth for adoption tonight, as a matter of fact, and after that, we basically move forward with recruiting individuals from your community, those people that are trusted in the community, that can speak on behalf of the Census and can help to engage the community members that are hard to reach, those that are difficult to reach, and those, of course, are people with experiencing homelessness, individuals that are -- do not speak English, predominantly speak Spanish or another language, for example. So those are the individuals we want to make sure that you -- your community targets so that your numbers will go up and therefore you will receive more funding and more representation. We also have, of course, jobs that will be given or made available through our area census. This particular key date in red, obviously, is April 1st of 2020. That is when the Census begins. I know a lot of people ask me, "I already received something. I think I've already answered the Census." No, the Census has not begun. Anything that is going out right now from the US Census Bureau is strictly a survey. That is all it is. The real Census, the decennial, begins April 1st. That is our effective kickoff day. We do allow for a couple of weeks before to do a self-response, but predominantly it is just April 1st. That's our kickoff, and that's when things begin. So if you do hear about people asking you about, "Oh, I received a paper questionnaire," like just a lady before this meeting said, "Oh, I got an email telling me from the Department of Commerce that they needed my information." I said, "No, no, 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 no. Department of Commerce will never reach out to you for information. It's the US Census Bureau, and we don't reach out to you. You reach out to us. You have our website. You have our phone number. You reach out to us. That's how you're going to reach us. We will never call anybody or engage anybody over the phone. If we do engage someone, it will be at the tail end of the decennial count, and it'll be a person that will show up who will have an actual ID badge with a photograph on it, and they will be carrying official Census bag and a Census computer." So it'll be very, very clear, and again, that information we will provide to your city so that your community is aware of that. So basically, that's the nuts and bolts of it. That's kind of what we do, and we're here to assist. We're here to make sure that your community gets counted and to provide you with the guidance and to help you put together this infrastructure. We reach out to your community members as well, faith-based and non-faith-based, and we bring everybody together, try to fold everyone in so that we don't have to duplicate efforts, and we can get everybody on the same page and get the information out as clearly and concisely and accurately as possible. So if you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. Are there questions at this time? Councilmember Allen.
Sure.
Thank you for that great presentation, Ms. Camacho. I was wondering, is there any reference to citizenship on the Census that decennial in 2020?
Good question. No, there will not be a citizenship question on the questionnaire. The citizenship question will show up in the American Community Survey. There will -- it will be in other surveys, but not in the decennial count questionnaire. So no, it will not be on the decennial count questionnaire.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know I was a census counter in 2010, Mayor, and anybody listening, so I know exactly from experience what you're talking about. I was a census taker here in Grand Terrace and in Colton, Loma Linda, and San Bernardino. And it's -- there are a variety of reasons that people don't want to come to the door. I've had them shout through the door to me that they're not going to come to the door, and, you know. And it's not just because I think of the particular citizenship issue. There's people who are very anti-government, you know, and so --
Yes.
And to think that 30 percent, we could have had more, another representative, not just, I mean, you know, not -- there could be more than we have now and at the state level or the federal level, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Sure. Further questions?
Only one question I had.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm sorry. Maybe I missed this in the packet, but is there some kind of a format that's going to be followed? I know it's supposed to be computer reads and a lot of the good stuff, but usually you have a whole bunch of columns and rows that people have to fill out, and I didn't see anything included in here. Are they still deciding what categories are going to be answered?
Not what categories. The decision's already been made, and there is a sample of the paper, the questions that are going to be on there on the web, but because they're rolling it out on -- we're rolling it out on the web, we -- there's still some tweaking that's happening to the website, to the actual interface, the computer interface. There is some discussion, has been some discussion, about making it accessible on an app, but there's some security issues that we're dealing with at that point. So it's a little bit in flux whether it will be or not be available in an app form, but everybody that can access their phone and has a smartphone can easily get on the web so they can use their actual phone. But the actual format itself will be rolling out probably, I would guess, around end of the year is when they're going to provide it to us as partnership specialists, and then we bring it to your Complete Count Committee and your community. And, of course, we will do follow-up presentations to you to keep you abreast of what's happening and keep you informed.
Thank you. Has the Census Bureau experienced any flashback in relation to the cost of supplying all these different languages and the formats? I would imagine that the citizen that doesn't need the languages really wouldn't like to pay for that service. Is there any consideration for that in cost recovery?
Not that I'm aware of. We were informed through our training that the various languages that are on there were on there in previous decennials, that they always strived throughout many other decennials before this one to provide as many languages as possible, and that they had been adding them in as time progressed. So it's kind of a culmination of many decennials before that have been sort of bringing everything sort of to the forefront. So not that I'm aware of that there's any additional cost, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members.
All right. Our next item is a consideration of any reordering, additions, or removal of items from the agenda. Do we have any changes? No? Thank you. All right. We'll move to the consent calendar, then. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove an item? All right. I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Hesse, second from Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Move to public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Do we have any requests to speak at this time? Okay. I'll just remind people that because of restrictions in California law, that we may not discuss or act on any item that is not on the agenda. We may ask statements for clarification, and items might have a brief response from staff. They also might be items that will be further agendized. Request to speak from Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. Johan Gallo, 22808 De Soto Street, Grand Terrace. I just wanted to thank the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and the first responders for the actions the other day to make sure that we didn't lose anybody in the hostage situation that we had. Appreciate all the resources that went in to have it end the way that it did, and appreciate all the work that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. I'll close public comment at this time and bring it back to council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I'd like to talk about briefly is I went to the last movie in the park on August 31, Saturday night, at Rollins Park. It was a great show, The Greatest Showman, and we had great music preceding the show. This is such a great program, and I just can't say enough about it and thank the city for doing this, and I look forward to the next season of movies in the park and even more, a more robust showing. I think our city has shown that they really appreciate this program by the attendance every time, so thank you very much for putting that on. It was a great show, a great season.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Gallo said, you know, last Thursday. He is right around the block from where I live, and thank you, first responders and the Sheriff's Department. You never know what's going to happen every day. You know, my son, he's Riverside PD. He was two-years sheriff also, and he saved a lady the other day from jumping off a bridge, so, you know, it's not only you guys are arresting people, you're saving people's lives and trying to do the best you can, and I know you just want to go home to your families at the end of the shift, but I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing for our city, maintaining its safety, and I'm just grateful and blessed that everybody came out all right, nobody got hurt, but I liked the quick response everybody did, and one other thing, thank God the city doesn't have to pay overtime for that, you know, it's part of our contract, but thank you again, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Thank you. Today, I attended a conference in the Santa Ana River Watershed Ambassador Program for policymakers, and it was, for me, a refresher about our watershed, but there was also some discussion that it was excruciatingly slow to get to in the late afternoon about some legislation and the funding that I imagine is going to help our disparate entities deal with some of our issues having to do with water quality and also the homeless issue that's affecting the area. I just want to talk a little bit about my husband's aunt that passed away. Her daughter Suzanne Santoya is more than 40-year resident of Grand Terrace. All her three grandchildren, Amy Matheson, Art Santoya Jr., and Arlene Navarro, are Grand Terrace homeowners, and, of course, the Sandy Torres family and the Dr. Gilbert Hernandez family are all part of this great family. She was the last of 10 girls and two boys, the Lopez family that immigrated to Colton in 1910, and it was, you know, she was 93, so she had a great life. She was a good servant of her church, San Salvador. She provided the bereavement committee and made sure that families had food, and she helped raise money for her church, and I just wanted to make sure that we recognize her family in this time of grief. And also, in the seven years I've been on the council, I've never missed a council meeting for vacation by accidentally scheduled a vacation for the next council meeting, so I will be absent the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles, and I'm sorry for your family's loss.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson.
Mayor, thank you for the time, and I'll defer to the mayor for this timeframe.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Well, in the words of Sylvia Robles, "In excruciatingly long informational sessions," I have one today, and it centers around transportation. So on September 4th, I attended Omni-Trans. There were a couple of things I wanted to make sure that I shared. We looked at their fourth quarter operating revenues, and they were about a half a million dollars under budget, year-to-date operating revenue. Year-to-date operating revenues were under budget by about 3% or $2.4 million. The negative variance, as they, they told us, was due to write-offs of Medi-Cal reimbursement. OmniTrans used to be able to build a state Medi-Cal system for related trips on access service, which is a, a smaller bus that travels a certain distance beyond the fixed routes and will be more of a place-to-place for those with physical disadvantages. The year-to-date budget variance, again, due to the write-off of Medi-Cal reimbursement and replacement, the write-off of the, they call it the liquefied compressed natural gas or LCNG fuel that they have changed their busing fueling to, they're no longer able to write off that as well. And so their, their operating expenses for the fourth quarter, looking at those, $21.9 million, that's .4 million dollars under budget, so that's good. That's a lot of money, though. Year-to-date operating expenses, again, are under budget by 1.4 million or 2%. Both of the positive variances are primarily driven by expenses in labor and benefits, services and purchases, purchased transportation that is less than planned. In other words, ridership is down. So ridership during the fourth quarter, OmniTrans carried a total of 2,791 passengers. This consisted of 2,700, 2,700,908 fixed route services, 90,000 on access routes. Again, those are the, the routes for those that have physical disadvantages. It reflects a total system decrease of 2.6% when compared to fourth quarter of last year, and year-to-date OmniTrans has carried a total of 10,873,722 passengers. That is a 3% decrease in passenger ridership. Fixed route ridership for the fourth quarter increased, though, by 2.8%, and access ridership decreased by 4.3% compared to the same period last year. Access ridership, I believe with the write-down of Medi-Cal, ends up being a more expensive passenger to carry. The reduction in ridership is mainly due to Lyft partnership program to access. So what they've done is they've partnered with those that drive for Lyft, and so they have fewer access buses actually going on fixed routes, and they do more of a call for service. Access is a little bit of a call for service, but they are, they're outsourcing that to Lyft, so they're not running the same buses, they're not using the same fuel that they were. And so in November 2018, the eligible customers, this system was implemented last November by the Special Transportation Services Department. So we received and filed a number of things related to this, and we had updates on Redlands' Passenger Rail and Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. We also authorized the CEO and general manager to do a number of things, and one of them was to execute a new revenue agreement with the Cal State San Bernardino. They call it a Go Smart program, and it's a discounted fare in which OmniTrans negotiates partnering with certain organizations. And this actually does help bring up ridership because the students through this program, they can show their ID for fare payment, and then they can ride a various number of places. So it's really good for our student population, and it does increase the ridership on the buses. We looked at a contract for reliable monitoring services and a contract with Complete Coachworks of Marietta for provision of labor and parts for engine and transmission replacements, a contract for hazmat. We also had an update from the general manager about the ridership, so he talked about a lot of the, the same things that I had talked about. Ridership gains, he said, were, were up in July by 7.9% compared to prior year, so that's not the formalized quarterly report that we were getting, and he has been pressed to really bring up ridership, so he wanted to make sure that he was giving us an interim report. We received an update on the ad hoc committee between OmniTrans and San Bernardino County Transportation Authority. This was an ad hoc meeting that was supposed to address a $400 million shortfall that was looming in the future of OmniTrans. And so the, the ad hoc committee came back with their recommendations, and for the most part, the, the board determined that they would go with the recommendations of the ad hoc committee to look at ways to reduce costs, which means that part of that is tied to 11% reduction in service. And so not knowing exactly what staff would come back with for determination of reduction of service, the board is not endorsing the plan, but they said, go ahead and go forward and come back to us with your recommendations. There was also a discussion of a reaffirmation of OmniTrans Transit District Legislation, and this is legislation that Assemblymember Reyes was carrying for OmniTrans that would effectively change the structure of this organization since they are looking at a contract to provide operations and maintenance of the Redlands Passenger Rail Service. Because they were entering into that contract, they wanted to protect the member agencies, such as the City of Grand Terrace and other cities. And so they were looking at a, a change in, in actual organizational structure. That has been set aside in a two-year bill, and so the, the board isn't ready to reaffirm their support for that yet because they really want to see if there is an opportunity to head off the financial difficulties of the organization. And so then later that day, I, I attended the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, so we did a few things. One of them was we conducted two sets of public hearings to consider condemnation of interest in rail properties in the city of Redlands, San Bernardino, and those are required for the Redlands Passenger Rail. The second one was for rail property in the city of Montclair Upland in Ontario, and that is for the Interstate 10 Corridor 1 contract, that is the, the, not the HOV lanes, but the, the toll lanes. So we also approved a contract to complete optimizing emergency medical dispatch plan, and this was a, a combination of, of agencies coming together for fire and police and sheriff and other organizations that are first responders so that they have a better way of working with each other and communicating with each other. We also received a presentation on the Inland Empire Changing the Narrative Initiative by Steve Lambert with the 2020 Network. And then the board was looking at a, a request from OmniTrans for an annual increase in discretionary revenue allocations, up from about 2.8% to 3.5% annually. And so this would be a $47-point-million-dollar allocation to OmniTrans. And based on the recommendations by the ad hoc committee that I mentioned earlier, the board talked about whether this, this increase in allocation would be tied to the 11% reduction in service that would lead to the cost savings that, that they were projecting, and determined that, the SBCTA board determined that they would tie their annual increase up to 3.5% with OmniTrans' ability to actually cut their services by 11%. So they tied it to, to that framework, but they also said to their staff that they wanted staff to begin assessing whether it made sense to bring the services of OmniTrans under the leadership and, and guidance of San Bernardino County Transportation Authority. And so with that direction, the board had, had done two things. One is they, they said to OmniTrans, we'll support what you're looking at as far as cuts, but we're tying our increased allocation to your ability to cut, but we also want further talks to see if maybe it makes sense for OmniTrans to not be its own agency at this point. And that is the end of my report. We have no public hearings tonight, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move to new business, and our first item is the City of Grand Terrace and the request to pledge its support and partnership with the United States Census Bureau for the 2020 U.S. Census. Item number 10, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor, for the record, G. Harold Duffy. And I believe that basically the council's already had the presentation based on what the presenter did, so if there are any additional questions I might be able to ask, but Ms. Camacho did a very good job in terms of explaining what we have before you as a resolution in support of the, of a partnership with the United States Census Bureau in ensuring a complete and accurate account for the 2020 U.S. Census.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time about this item? All right, I'll open public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak on this item? No, Madam Mayor. All right, we'll bring it back to council for their consideration.
Mayor.
Councilmember Allen.
Mayor, I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, in support of and partnership with the United States Census Bureau in ensuring a complete and accurate account for the 2020 U.S. Census.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. Move on to item 11, which is an update of the City of Grand Terrace Legislative Platform for Assemblymember Reyes and State Senator Leva to advance in California State Assembly and Senate. Mr. Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In January of this year, the City Council approved the legislative advocacy programs, which consisted of 10 items in the following areas. Hazard mitigation, recreation, accessibility, traffic enforcement, outreach to the homeless, internet connectivity, school construction, transit services, urban farming, and rails to trails. These items were, were given to Assemblyperson Reyes and also Senator Leva and asked them to advocate during the past legislative platform, legislative session. And so what you have before you today is a list, that list, and what staff would like to do is get some direction from the, from the council to, to either move these items forward to the next legislative session and also to request that the council provide us with some direction for any additions. So what our goal would be is if we get some additions today, we will return to the council by November the 12th. That's our first meeting in November, and that will give us time to put the items together and then forward them to Assemblyperson Reyes' office along with, uh, Senator, Senator Leva, and they would be able, their staff be able to do the analysis and the assessment in order to put something together for the new legislative year starting in January.
All right, any questions of staff at this time? Okay, I'm going to ask for public comment, and then I'm going to come back for discussion. Are there any requests to speak on this item? No, Madam Mayor. All right, thank you. I'll close public comment and come back for discussion and consideration with the council. Councilmember Hussey.
Mr. Duffy, on the outreach for, to the homeless and, uh, can we, you know, I don't, the grant we're trying to get, can we also try to incorporate the Community Resource Officer with the, the sheriffs on that? Because they, they're able to outreach the homeless, so it doesn't tie down the Sheriff's Department, sheriff officers? And we used to have a Community Resource Officer here, and I don't know how many hours we get them now, but that would also help with other things, to help with the sheriffs. Can that be part of the grant?
I can certainly check in with the Sheriff's Department and, and also ask if there's some options for us in that area, and then I can bring that back to the council on November the 12th.
All right, thank you.
So is there anything on our list that needs to come off besides the ones that have already been funded? Councilmember Allen.
On the transit services, um, are we, is that, is that for the smart bus stops? Is that what we're talking about?
That page, packet page 188?
I'm sorry?
Packet page 188?
Right.
Is that the one you're referring to?
Well, um, when we talk about transit services on, when we listed it in the letter.
Right.
Were we were, is that what we were referring to when we talked about transit services? Are we talking about, is that what we're talking about, the, the smart bus stops? Because I think there's more to transit than just that that we should, we could look at. I mean, we have a piece of property that's right beside some rails, and it'd be nice if there was a station that went to San Bernardino instead of Paris from the edge of our city, you know?
So in this particular case, we were talking about actual bus shelters, bus stops?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought about, those smart bus stops?
Yes.
Yeah. But transit, you know, under the, the broad umbrella, I mean, a metro station over there by the high school?
Yes.
At Old Cage Park, that's what I'm talking about. That would be a great transit project. I don't know if anybody's ever thought of that, but I think it's a great idea.
I understand that, so is it the direction for me to probably bring something back and try to advocate for?
Well, I think, I think you know a little bit about that subject over in that particular area. Is that true, Mr. Duffy? No, Mr. Duffy.
That is, that is true, and I, I believe that I will be bringing something back to the council for a separate discussion in that particular area.
Just anyway?
Anyway, yes.
And so based on that discussion, could then we ask to add it if that is something that we're interested in?
We can, but I believe that that discussion for legislative platform would be premature at this time.
Okay.
But I think that once we can, can look at the property and look at the potential and have a discussion later on, that, that maybe next year we can add it to legislative platform or something like that.
Okay. Now, as far as the, does that answer your question, Councilmember Allen?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, City Manager.
In the discussion that Councilmember Hussey just had about the homeless outreach, I know we have it in the letter, but we don't necessarily have a specific item in our packet. Is that what's going to come back to us based on Councilmember Hussey's comments?
Yes, what I would do is I would check with the Sheriff's Department, see if they've done something like that in the past, and also check and see if there's actually any, any nexus or legislation there, out there, or some options for us, and bring that, bring that item back.
Councilmember Allen.
I'd like to, I just want to make sure that the dollars that we allocate to the HOPE program is the best use of dollars for law enforcement purposes. I, because I'm, I've heard, overheard discussions among my counterparts in other cities, and they express this same sentiment in that, you know, are we really, and I mean, Grand Terrace doesn't really have that big of a homeless problem, but we certainly need, well, we have this desire for more law enforcement, and it's certainly one way to achieve that somewhat, but could we achieve more with those dollars in another manner since we really don't have that serious of a homeless problem? But I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, and those primary dollars are for housing, and so that's one of the areas that we need to bring back and, and finish the discussion on is what are we going to do in terms of having that housing platform?
We're not shorting our housing, are we?
We're not.
Those that need, for that source of money?
Well, we're not shorting our housing because we, we, but every dollar that we use in a different direction is less dollars that you use for, for that particular area. Now, the amount of money that we're using at this point in time doesn't have significant impact.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles.
A community, okay, so I'm confused because fire, I mean, police and fire are our general fund obligation, so I don't understand how we're going to go and ask for the state to fund a community resource officer.
Well, well, what I had indicated was that I would go and check with the Sheriff's Department, and then I would, I would look for options for that. I would come back to you and say, either we can or we cannot do that.
Because I don't understand how, they're officers. Okay, so they're officers. They're going to be CalPERS-able and all that, so I don't understand how we're going to go and ask for the state to fund something that's an obligation of general fund money.
Well, and you may be right, that may, that may ultimately be the case. What I would be doing is I'd be looking at if there, if there are existing programs or if other cities found ways to utilize community service officers for particular, particular, particular programs. And so the answer will come back to you. Based on my research, that's not viable or that is viable.
Councilmember Robles, if I can add on to that, I think we've asked our assembly member if there was money for law enforcement, and, and the answer came back. member if there was money for law enforcement, and the answer came back that, no, there was not. They don't fund long-term like that. They do project-based funding. Is that true?
That is correct, in terms of when the assembly person was asked that. What I was going to do was I was going to check with the sheriff's department and other resources before we, you know, try and make a request to get the same answer again.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Hussey.
Okay, as far as the homeless, I don't, Mr. Allen, I don't know if you've been over by the mobile station. There's a couple people there now. So we're definitely having more homeless people here. They walk through our town every day, so it's better to be proactive than reactive. It's, you know, it's, you hear it on the news, a slippery slope. We're the best to put the funds for these people. And the number one thing, when we had the sheriff officer here for the HOPE program, is they're not looking at the sheriffs as getting arrested. They're looking at the sheriffs as being resources to try to get programs. And most of the homeless people don't want to have programs. They don't want to be bothered. They want to be left alone. But at least we have, and I'm sure, I don't know the stats, with the officer that was here with the HOPE program, saying they are helping some of them. As far as the resource officer, I mean, that's just a pie in the sky we're asking for. I mean, I would like to ask for, and we get money for a wrecked building for, you know, Grand Terrace. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask. They said there wasn't money for that, but we don't know what next year they might, the way they're, the governor's talking about spending money on homeless problems, that they might have money for resource officers. We don't know. But it's a pie in the sky situation. I know we pay for, you know, it's our responsibility for a city to pay for the HOPE to have it, and I think it's doing a good job. I mean, I've been to League of Cities, and they're doing nothing but a great work on that program. But, you know, they, I think they had a thing in L.A. today where they went to encampment, and only, and they had resources for veterinarians, other outreaches, and I think maybe 1% of them took advantage of it, because a lot of them don't want to be helped. But, you know, we still got to have it. I mean, we're having, unfortunately, people dying on our streets. We're having, you know, they're walking through neighborhoods, or, you know, we're not immune from the area that's happening around here. And I know one of the biggest reasons, the things was, even like when that E-Planet disappeared, you know, for the recycle thing, that was, some people were trying to stop that so people don't go, you know, because it was bringing homeless people in. You know, I think they're cleaning up the streets to have that, but, you know, it's still, it's, there's different things. So that was my reason why I asked for the resource thing, but we do have a problem, and I think to be proactive before it gets worse. So that was my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Mayor Protem Wilson, and then Councilmember Allen.
I'm not exactly sure where this question drives, although I would say probably City Manager. I'm trying to establish, in accordance with the packet page 179 in the discussion, talks about in January last year, the City Council approved the city's Legislative Advocacy Program, which consisted of 10 items. And in the second column, it talks about traffic enforcement, and yet I don't really see a lot of linkage between what we're presenting to support the traffic enforcement council. So I kind of like to understand, if I happen to be talking to somebody about this, how the traffic enforcement becomes, let's fix the hills down there on the way down to Colton, or whatever.
Sir, the traffic enforcement is actually on packet page 184, and that's the city's attempt to try to get the state to reinstate the video ticketing program?
For the street sweeper.
For the street sweeper, yes.
I think we should rename it.
And you guys can do that.
Maybe we need to make it more compelling, and add something about clean, what is it, MPDES? Add some of that in there?
Okay.
Is there other traffic enforcement that you'd like us to focus on, Mayor Protem Wilson?
Not at this time, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Allen, and then Councilmember Robles.
I was just going to ask you a question, Mayor, or Councilmember Hussey, or whoever wants to answer it. The Community Resource Officer that you're referring to, is that the same thing as the Sheriff's Service Specialist that we used to have, Ms. Beasley? And that's what her job title is, a Community Resource Officer? Okay.
Who's answering that question? I see head nodding, but I think we need something for the record.
Yes.
Captain up there just?
Okay, so.
That is a yes.
City Manager says yes. They are one and the same.
Yeah, I just needed to, I want to make sure I understood who that was.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we don't keep going back to the well for the same thing, beating our head against something that, again, call it whatever you have, the employee is a public safety employee. And so, we're going to go in and keep asking, the violet's yellow now, will you fund it? And the question, the answer is, when you study public policy, the main thing about a local government is police powers for health and safety. Our main focus and charge is police protection. We don't go to the state, and we don't go to the feds to ask for it. And when the feds did the cops program, the problem with that was now you had to lay off people that were in police departments, in sheriff's departments across the country that were dependent on a federal funding stream. And Lieutenant Wolf has told us over and over again, they don't want to get back into that situation. So I'm a little bit resistant to being told by you, well, we'll go and ask again, and maybe I'll get this answer, you know? I think we know the answer. Public safety is our responsibility. So I, so I'm not, the other thing, too, is, you know, we're getting quite a bit from our current year's legislative priorities. I mean, the park itself is a tremendous amount of money coming into this community. So I think we have to recognize that. And as far as changing the name on this traffic mitigation, because again, traffic mitigation, traffic enforcement is a police activity. So we need to be careful in what words we're using on this. And that's all I have to say.
All right, are there any changes? Again, this is an opportunity for us to give direction to staff. So do we want to maintain what we have here? And is there anything else to add? Councilmember Allen?
The internet connectivity, was that our program to establish an umbrella of, like, make Grand Terrace a hotspot?
Yes.
Where the kids could access, yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, great, great program.
Okay. So you have one idea that's going to come back to us. My take on that is that, yes, things do change at the state level, and there are programs that they have. And I would say, you know, if we're making sure we're looking at legislation that's out there, and then we have an opportunity to come back and say, hey, let's apply for some of that, I think that's great. I think to continue to ask for something without identifying the legislation that it would go towards. That's just my, that's just my take on that. Anyway, you want further direction on this?
No, I just wanted to make a point of clarification.
Okay.
My response to the community officer was that what I would do is I would check with the sheriff's department, and I would check and see if there's any other cities doing anything. But my goal would not to go to the senator's office unless I, see, we arrived at these items because we tried to tie, there was a funding source somewhere for this. And so, when I come back and say, everyone's telling me there's not a way to make this connection with a community officer, I'm not going to recommend that you include that as part of a package.
And so, as far as the video parking violation, digital photography, that was an existing piece of legislation that has expired, and so what we were wanting to do is get them to consider that again.
Yes, and that's, and that's an item that was, as you said, was in existence before, and was very effective. And we've, and we just need to lobby more in order to get them to do another pilot program, and then be the test case to be able to show the data. When they did the program the last time, they never brought the samples back and evaluated the program, so the program just died. And so, we want to be able to advocate for that this time.
Okay. And so, do we need any kind of motion to move forward?
I would, yes, actually, I have a motion for the record.
So the motion is that we've given you direction, and you will return back to us with what you've heard?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, so that's my, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item 12, which is Automated License Plate Readers and Neighborhood Watch Program Funding Request. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular item. Is there not a staff report for the, there's slight technical difficulties. So Mayor, on June 5th, on June 25th, 2019, Councilman Hussey requested a future agenda item for the council to request a grant through Assemblyperson Reyes's office for ALPR cameras and Neighborhood Watch Program. And so, one of the things that staff just needed to clarify in terms of how the process works when you have future agenda items. And so, what we've done here is we've put together the flow chart that identifies how the process works. So the first step in the process is to request future agenda item by a member of the council. They contact the city manager, and it's added to Section H, Request for Future Agenda Item. The next step is that the item actually comes to the council under Section H, and the topics is introduced and voted on by council to add a new, add to new business for discussion. And so, in this particular case, that this item came before the council, and the council made a motion to bring back for discussion for, for a grant for the ALPR cameras and Neighborhood Watch information. And so, what we ended up with, and we actually had a proposal that was presented by Councilman Hussey and a member of the community. And while the initial part of the proposal was consistent with the county, with the council's direction to look at ALPR camera program and also Neighborhood Watch material, there were other items that were listed in the document that were not consistent with what the council's direction. And so, we pulled it from our previous agenda and brought it back. So what you have before you today is information that would lead to the discussion component of, is this something that the council would like to see added to our legislative platform with Assemblyperson Reyes for ALPR cameras and Neighborhood Watch Program? The total estimate for the potential grant is about $175,000. Staff did reach out to Assemblyperson Reyes's office, and they indicated that they thought that this was a good proposal. As one of the things that Assemblyperson Reyes told us, they can look at hard, physical items to fund, like cameras and booklets for Neighborhood Watch programs. And so, they requested that we provide the information to them no later than November, the middle of November. So that way, then, the staff during the, before the legislation, legislation session starts, they'll be able to look at the material and come up with a format to advocate for the process.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Are there questions of staff at this time? All right, I'll open it up to public comment, request to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their discussion and consideration. All right, Councilmember Allen, and then Councilmember Robles.
On page, packet page 201, where it gives the breakdown of the costs, I just would like to know why we're relocating existing cameras for 25,000. Is there something, I mean, were they placed in the wrong place initially, or something?
City Manager Duffy?
No, I don't believe so. I think that they are, it's really up to the sheriffs. What's going to happen is that with the interchange, with the interchange happening, I think there will be some adjustments to the cameras, because what we tried to do initially was to create sort of this tracking method, that when you come into town, your capture coming in and coming out. The way we have the cameras positioned right now, because of the construction, we've moved them to certain locations. I don't know that the dollar amount is, is, it's something that costs $25,000 to move the existing, move the existing cameras.
So it's because of the construction down by the, at the new bridge, they had to move that camera that's down there?
Commerce and Vivienda, and then also with the addition of the three-way stop at Grand Terrace Road and Barton.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, it's a request for a grant anyway. It's not our money, but so it'd be good anyway.
Councilmember Robles.
I'm, I don't really know enough. I don't see any issue with requesting money for cameras, but I do have an issue with the procedure here. The council didn't appoint an ad hoc committee to go meet with the, with our legislator and represent us on anything. So when I read the city manager, Mr. Duffy, Councilmember Hussey, the sheriff's department, and Mayor Reyes, and then we have on the agenda something to support, you know, I don't really have, other than, you know, again, it's not staffing and payroll. Payroll's pretty broad. But, you know, I want to remind the council that we're never just a citizen out there. You can't go with a city manager and meet with a legislator and be a citizen. You're a council member. And all of us, you know, when, nobody wanted to participate on updating our procedures, but, you know, we really need to stick to how we do the process here. We need to follow it, because this just kind of feels like it's a little bit out of order of how we do things. That's about.
Councilmember Hussey, and then Councilmember Allen.
Well, if we're going to go ad hoc committee, we shouldn't meet with other employees either while being approved of the ad hoc committee. So I'll leave that at that. I was invited by Assemblymember Reyes to go talk about this. And we talked about it back in, I think, two years ago, we had Azure Hills. So, Mr. Gallo and everybody, we went there, and actually, I was a fly on the wall. They were all talking about the thing. So if a resident asks a council member to come and be with them for help on something, as is council members, should go help the residents. So you don't need a committee to help a resident. I mean, we do a lot for residents. Everybody does stuff, and they call the city manager for that. So if a resident, I don't care who it is, calls me up and asks me to come and be there for support, I'm going to be there for support. That's why I was voted in. But, yes, moving the cameras, that was part of the deal. Mr. Gallo and Lieutenant Wolf sit down with this. I didn't sit down and do this. But they sat down with the prices, and they went through everything, and this was the direction that Assemblymember Reyes gave the individuals to do this. So I think it's a good program. Cameras have helped solve crime in our city. And the Neighborhood Watch, we hear time and time again, get it started. Mr. Gallo, Anthony Cortez, they've been trying to get it started. So I think signs, they stop everything, they prevent stuff. I just had my neighbor three houses down, they tried to steal their boat at 12 o'clock at night. It's a big ocean boat. So people are pretty brave out there. Neighbors keep each other's eyes out, and then when you have a community block leader, captain leader, you know, they gets the word out. Because a lot of people, they don't come to council, or they don't, you know, they don't watch TV, but people will listen to their neighbors. And if you have a strong Neighborhood Watch program, I mean, the sheriffs, we could have 20 sheriffs, they're not going to be everywhere. It's up to the residents. This is our city, and we need to make sure we take care of it. But the cameras are a big. Pardon?
She said point of privilege.
So the cameras are a big help.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hussey, Councilmember Robles, and then Councilmember Allen.
Point of privilege is, I'm tired of my personal attacks from you. I'm tired of personal attacks from you. You still are part of this council, and it's incumbent to you to act as a team member of this council, and you're of this council, and your snide remarks about employees coming to me, that there's case law, they have a right to come to me, and I have a legal right to listen to them. And if you want to throw crap around because you want to throw a tantrum, you go right ahead. But what I'm saying is, there's a process, you're elected to be part of a legislative body, you do not have any power or authority on your own to represent me or the rest of this council or the city with, at Assemblymember's office.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles, Councilmember Allen, and then Mayor Protem.
So, on packet page 201, in the paragraph underneath the listing of the costs, there's a state, it says that the group's recommendation to the city is to consider adding additional oversight for the program by assigning it to the code enforcement department. And my concern with that is, is that our code enforcement is stretched so thin now as it is anyway with the owner, unoccupied rental program inspections and street sweeping, monitoring, and all that. I'm just concerned that we might be leaving areas uncovered by code, that code, other areas that they're responsible for. I don't know how much they would have to get involved, you know what I'm saying, in the code enforcement.
Mr. Duffy?
Well, and that's more of an administrative item, and that's why that, that particular section's not, you know, as part of the proposal. And as I said before, based upon the direction or what the council approved on the future agenda item, it was to look at a grant to submit, and for ALPR cameras and Neighborhood Watch. The assignment of the resources for the day of the operations, that's, that's not something that you would take up as, as part of this action as you, you had approved. Yeah.
Well, then, we'll just believe it at that, and my, you know, so you'll know in the future now what my thoughts are on that.
Mayor Protem?
I would, oh, sorry. Old habits.
Mayor, I regret to, to make this a point of order, but given the tension and the outbursts that are taking place here, I believe that it might be appropriate to vote for a moment of censure for Councilwoman Robles. None of us is immune from procedures, and I understand that, but I really believe that we are not constructively using our time if we attack each other. And so, I would support a vote of censure.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Point of.
Councilmember Robles, you had comments you wanted to make.
Okay, point of privilege. I was attacked too. So, what I think is, why don't we let staff come back with this, with the other part of the legislative priorities? But I think we should rank them. You know, I really don't have any problem with, with cameras being requested. I just don't know if any others have any ranking issues with what, you know, should something be more important than others in, in our hierarchy of what we request?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for your comments. I'd like us to concern ourselves with what is at hand, and I do like the idea of Neighborhood Watches, I'm very much in support of them, very much of support of ALPR cameras, and also believe that we need to look at repositioning once our construction's over. What I look at when I see what is before us is that we are asking for a lot of hardware and information. What I don't see in this proposal is number of Neighborhood Watches. I see a map for where we're proposing them, and I, and I understand what we're driving at with this map, but I'm also wondering, based on actual Neighborhood Watches as they form, the locations for the signs might change. And so, when we look at a proposal for hardware and cameras that are not going to be used immediately, that does open up the need for a process that would involve staff and staff resources that would be taken away from other, otherwise, other duties that, that they need to focus on at this time. I'm very much in support of this proposal, but I'm wondering if we need to truly look at the deadline of mid-November for this particular proposal. I'm in agreement of adding it to our legislative priorities, but I'm also wondering why it is that, that we're putting a lot of this before the work of actually forming the Neighborhood Watches. I know with neighbors, talking to neighbors, neighbors looking out for each other, it's not about the signs, and it's not about the information, and it's not about the decals, and I understand their deterrence, but I would really like to see that we have these Neighborhood Watches, and they are prescribing what it is that they would like to have, instead of us ordering a lot of equipment and having it sitting here, and it might never, ever get distributed appropriately. So, those are my two cents. Any other further comments on this? Councilmember Hussey?
Yeah, as far as the Neighborhood Watches, I, I think Mr. Gallo and Anthony Cortez were taking care of that, and they wanted to get the items in so they could start posting it. So, and I know when we had the National Night Out, they were going around getting people to sign up for Neighborhood Watch, to try to, you know, revitalize the program. So, I see what you're saying, you know, but I think they, they want to be ahead of the game. I mean, I don't know if we could have Mr. Gallo come up and speak on this, but it's closed now, but, and Anthony's not here, but I know that was part of the, the thing that was explained, that they want to, and to already have the programs going and have the signs there, so they're not starting the, the program and then waiting for the signs. So, that was what I was heard, told.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. And I do understand that point, but I also believe that you don't have to have the signs and the decals before you start the program. The true, the true use of it is with the, the neighbors and how they communicate with each other, and there are a lot of ways that they can do that without signs. City Manager Duffy?
Yes, Mayor. Perhaps we could bring, at a future meeting, the Sheriff's Department forward to sort of outline how they support and how they help develop Neighborhood Watch programs. Then, we can also look at, I can provide you with information on existing Neighborhood Watch programs that are, that are in existence, or people that are waiting to volunteer. What I would suggest, if possible, for the council to, to move forward with adding this particular item to the legislative platform. The good thing about, if, if you have it added to the legislative platform, if, once you get the hard dollars, they're really flexible in terms of, say, you know, you don't need as many books, and you want to have extra cameras, you can, you can do that if, if you're selected for the funding. So, I, I would say that what we can do is we can, while we put this on the legislative platform, within the next 60 days or so, we come back to the council with a clear understanding of, so you, so the community understands how Neighborhood Watch is formed and what that process is, and then you'll know, if we lay it out for the community and people aren't signing up, they don't, they can't form program by the time it's, the next year's budget come around, then that's, then you'll know that that's not going to be effective program in, in the city.
I can live with that. Councilmember Robles?
Again, it, you know, this is kind of a weird item. I mean, it didn't says, and the mayor and the city council point a member of the council provide oversight for Neighborhood Watch program.
I think Mr. Duffy has already stated that that's not something that he meant for us to consider tonight, that we're, we're looking at the equipment.
We mentioned about the code enforcement officer, but did we, did you ask about that part? Okay, thank you.
No, I think we're, I think we're only looking at the, the cameras, and the signs, and the decals, and the books, and, and money for installation and those things. I think that's really all we're looking at, and whether we are giving direction to put this on our legislative priorities, and for the proposal to go in, for the funding for the, the items.
No, my, my point is, if we, when, when you brought back how the flow chart was supposed to be, I think you should have taken this out, or just addressed it in your narrative some way. That's all.
All right, so, we need to provide direction to staff to include funding requests in council annual legislative priorities for Automated License Plate Readers and Neighborhood Watch program, funding requests only, and that would be my motion, to give that direction.
A second.
All right. There's a motion, and second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna voting yes.
All right. Item 13, which is Adoption of Resolutions Approving Applications From the California Natural Resources Agency's Local Assistance Specified Grant Program for Blue Mountain Trailhead and Trail Project and Accessible Playground Equipment Project. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So, as indicated by the mayor, this, this item is for the council to adopt two resolutions approving applications to the California Natural Resources Agency. This, the item before the city council supports our 2030 vision for goal number one, to ensure our fiscal viability. This also, in the Planning and Development Services priority list, that was adopted by the city council, the Blue Mountain Trail and Trailhead is a top priority project, and our Public Works Department has play equipment as a priority C for the city. So, through the efforts of Assemblymember Reyes, the California State Budget for 2019, 2020 appropriated funding in the amount of 1.2 million for the Blue Mountain Project and $20,000 for accessible play equipment. This, this funding is referred to as specified grants, and the city does need to make application for the use of the monies, but the funding's in place, and so it's non-competitive. The 1.2 million grant is for the acquisition and development of the Blue Mountain Trailhead and Trail Project, which supplements the previously awarded grant of $212,000 as part of the Habitat Conservation Fund. So, this grant would help the city with its long-term goal to have Blue Mountain Trail as a public wilderness park, and it would provide the city the resources to secure a combination of property and/or easements, and assist with the construction of the ultimate trail. And this, this area here, this is Palm Avenue, and so this is the existing road, this is the city's property that we have a grant to build a trailhead and a trail that would ultimately connect to the road there. The other project is for accessible equipment. Although our city parks do have playground equipment, they're not accessible, and so this grant of $20,000 would start the process of installing some accessible equipment. Our public work staff would target Rollins Park as the first project that we would do this, and if funding permits, we would look at a second park to also install accessible equipment. The first step in, 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 this process is for the city council to adopt the tax resolutions approving the applications for the specified grants funds. Once these resolutions are submitted to the state, the second step would be to enter into agreements for the use of the funds. I conclude my presentation, I'm available to respond to any comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. I have one question. You're going to start with Rollins Park, is there any particular reason you chose that park?
Madam Mayor, I'll defer that, response to that question to our Public Works Director.
Director French?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We had replaced the surface at the Rollins Park in the two areas, which gave us a lot more square footage that we could utilize for safe, for accessible equipment, so there was more room there. That's why we chose Rollins.
Right, thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, see no questions? Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak for this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration.
Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace approving applications for specified grant funds for the Blue Mountain Trailhead and Trail Project, and that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace approving applications for specified grant funds for the Grand Terrace Playground Project.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna voting yes.
Thank you. Item 14 is the Adoption of Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Years 2019, 20, 2024, 25. Oh, it's all of those years, okay, thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Allen French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. This item before you is the annual update of our CIP program. This item supports the 2030 goal number two, maintaining public safety and investing in critical infrastructure. In November of 2016, the city adopted the five-year CIP to address road maintenance issues in the city with local and access roads. Excuse me. The pavement management system assigned each section of road, based on its condition, a PCI number. Then, the conditions of the roads were ranked and developed five-year program to rehabilitate the street sections. This year coming up is year three of the program, which includes grinding and overlaying up, up to 11 streets, a cost, estimated cost of $900,000. Year three timeline is to finish looking at funding sources at this time in September. We'll prepare the bid documents in October and hope to bid out the project in November. At this time, staff is recommending that the council adopt the resolutions approving the five-year CIP update, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time.
Thank you, Director French. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
So, we're, we're having to rebid for these streets, and we, I mean, what I mean, not rebid, but, but what I mean is, we already did some streets, and so contractors bid on those streets, some contractor got the bid and did the streets. Is this a process each year that, this new batch of streets? We can't just get a contract one time, have the staff work done, all the streets get contracted, we don't have to keep doing staff work and paying, and all that?
Councilmember, if it was set up as a five-year program, and each year, we have the set of streets that we do, and, so it contracts out each year. If we had the four or $5 million right now, we could bid all the rest of the project out and do the whole thing, but we only get allotted so much every year from the Measure I program, and, and we have to have this adopted every year to get that money. So, it's a yearly basis.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions of staff? Any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
I'll recommend that we adopt a resolution, the city council adopt a resolution of the city of Grand Terrace, County of San Bernardino, State of California, adopting the Measure I five-year capital improvement plan for FY 2019, 2020 through FY 2023, 2024.
A second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna voting yes.
All right, thank you. So, our next item is Request for Future Agenda Items by City Council. We have one for consideration tonight. We got a nice walk through the process. Our topic to consider tonight is discussion whether the city council would like to have any type of cannabis cultivation or retail in the city with discussion regarding a broad estimate of revenue for the city, and this is requested by Councilmember Sylvia Robles. Do you want to give a little bit more discussion to that before we have a?
This is simply to put before the council something definitive, do you want to move forward or not move forward? That's it.
Did, is this to have the discussion now, or to have the discussion in the future?
This is, this is for our future agenda item, does, do we want to have that come back to us in the near future for serious discussion?
I think it needs to come back. I mean, it keeps coming up. We keep going, we come to workshops, I'm walking the streets, I'm going, I am in Stater Brothers, I mean, I'm in Geno's. People are talking about this. So maybe we need to have it on the agenda and have a discussion about it. I ain't saying what they're saying to me either. I'm just saying.
And I'm not going to say what they're saying.
They want us to have a discussion about it.
I'm not saying what they're saying to me either. I'm not opposed to having the discussion. I'm not ready to have the discussion.
Well, I agree, because I've got things pending also on the, that I want to see on the agenda that haven't come up yet, by the way, you know.
Okay, that's off topic, Councilmember Allen.
And so I'd like for, but not just because of that, but I just, you know.
Do you want to propose a timeframe?
Next year.
It can just be on the list and work its way up along with the others.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to having the discussion. And I will say, when I have the discussion, I want to have the discussion about a specific use, or the specific kinds of licensing that we are considering. But I'm having an issue with a couple things, and one is, I don't want to have a broad-range discussion that is not focused around perhaps a project that would really draw in our discussion to give us a better opportunity to talk specifics. But I'm not ready to have the discussion at this time. I think it's, that might distract us, or distract staff.
From the projects I've already asked for?
From the projects that you've already asked for, Councilmember Allen. No, I don't want to direct staff to spend a lot of time coming up with a staff report at this time, I guess, is what I'm looking at.
Have we had any, have we had any applications for permits, or anybody come to City Hall and say, hey, I want to open up a workshop?
Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
I don't think so, have they?
Madam Mayor, so we do get inquiries from time to time, but we do let people know that we have ordinances in place that wouldn't allow any cannabis uses in the city.
I almost would like to see it as part of the general plan, if they would want to even look at zoning, that would make sense. Councilmember Hussey, you had to come in.
Well, that's what Director Molina said, you know, we had an ordinance, we had this discussion about this before, we voted on it. So we're bringing it back to staff. I mean, so we're going to look at it. Again, I know Mr. Councilmember Allen's new to it, you know, is that why we're doing this, to give him the opportunity to try to change things, or are we going to stick to our ordinance? And, I mean, I don't understand what, you know, we're going to change...
Yeah, Councilmember Hussey, my understanding is, we had a, we had a staff-prepared presentation and workshops, and we did not give direction to staff. And it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Robles, you're just saying, do we want to give direction to staff at this time?
Correct.
So do we want to give direction to staff at this time? That's all we're asking. And it looks like not at this time.
To clarify, it's just to have a discussion come back on the various types of licenses, you know, maybe revenue, things of that sort. But at that point, you'll be giving staff direction. My understanding.
I'm sorry. I just felt that we had a workshop, and then we said, okay, let's have a cannabis workshop. So this seems to create some expectations out there that we're actually moving in that direction. So my feeling is, I don't really feel that we are. So my feeling was that this is, the council needs to send a signal they're not interested at all. It's not, you know, so I don't know why we even had a workshop. Or we can have a discussion, and the parameters of those discussion would be what types of licensing. But again, you know, so we could, your concern about the staff, staff times, I just would like to say, you know, do you want to have this discussion in six months? You know, let's just not leave it open where, you know, people out there think that we're going to, are moving in a direction that we're not in reality moving.
I'd say I'd probably be ready in nine months.
Okay.
So should this come back as a, as a request for future agenda items in nine months? Or should we put it on the list of...
I would just put it on the list and note within nine months.
Okay.
Or nine months from now.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
And Madam Mayor, one other note, I mean, in terms of the staff report, I mean, to minimize time, and we could just attach my, our workshop presentation to the staff report, and that could be it.
Okay.
Obviously, if there's any changes, we'll update it, but that would be to minimize cost.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, your communications.
Is there direction or consensus from the motion second?
For me, yes.
So a motion to come back and have a discussion in nine months?
Yeah, no, we need a motion and a second. Yes.
All right, so?
I'll move that. We bring this item back in nine months.
Well, I'll second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo votes yes, Councilmember Hussey votes no.
All right, thank you. All right. Mr. City Manager, your communications.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe I have one item. There you go. Just to remind the council and the community that on October the 5th, from 8:00 to 12:00 p.m., we will have our annual community cleanup day, where you can bring your bulky items to City Hall, and also going to have a shred event here on site. Also, the residents should have, should receive a flyer in their trash bill that would basically have this particular information in it, allowing them to be aware of the community cleanup day. And it's usually a pretty active day, and residents bring out a lot of material. What you cannot bring are tires, e-waste, and hazardous waste will not be, will not be accepted. Okay? Thank you very much, Mayor.
We're not shredding tires, then.
We're not shredding tires, only paper.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy. And we have a closed session tonight. And so before I recess to close session, I will just remind everybody that we will be closing tonight in memory of Delia Lopez Rosales, and that we will have our next regular scheduled meeting, September 24th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. So at this time, we will recess to close session. We have one item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.6, title City Manager. And at this time, we are in recess. So we will reconvene to open session. City met and closed session with one item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.6, title City Manager. There were no reportable actions. So tonight, we will adjourn, and we are doing so in memory of Delia Lopez Rosales. The next regular, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 24th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with the council procedures. We are adjourned.